For the invitation, if you're able to. Lord God Almighty, help us to bring your kingdom of truth and mercy to all the people. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag on the count of three. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you, thank you. You're made to see. Okay, Deb, how about roll call?
Councilwoman Bogus.
Yeah.
Councilman Purdon.
He'll be here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilman Corey.
Here.
Councilman Folic.
Here.
Okay. Public, I mean, this is the, the mayor's welcome. We, we the people, who are we the people? It's you. You are the people. And you have a responsibility as an American to help and guide this government. We, our elected officials represent you, the people. So please, I want to know what's on your mind and do it in a civil manner though. Okay. Next, will you move on to a public comment? Now, if you want to comment about, you need to fill out a comment card, which is out in the hallway there, and give them to Debbie here on the end so she can record. Make sure you spell your name right, and then it'll go on in minutes for next meeting. Okay, we start here, public comment. Identify yourself, please.
Dan. Dan Hirschen, Avonlea Drive, Benita Springs. A very brief comment. Obviously, I think a lot of people here to support the rail trail, and I certainly am adding my support as a taxpayer here in Benita Springs. However, I want to also support the resolution that, that I read this morning, that the city wishes to consider for passage. And I want to commend the city for also writing into that particular resolution the fact that the vines exclude, will be excluded, at least that's the recommendation that the city will be making. And I support that. I have a lot of friends who live up in the vines. It's a wonderful community. It's a beautiful community. It is a gated community, and if they can work around that particular element of the trail, that would be a fantastic thing. So again, I give my support, and I would hope that the people here would do the same thing, and the city council will approve the resolution that's before you. Thank you.
What is the resolution? Ms. Amy.
Good morning. Amy Caramba, Pelican Landing. I just want to start out first by offering my delayed congratulations to the newly-elected council people and the re-elected councilwoman, and also to our new deputy mayor. I'm sure that together, the council and the staff will do a wonderful job going forward. I have a couple of items that I want to point out on the, on the agenda. First of all, on the proclamations, the presentation of the 15 years of service to Nicole Perino and Chuck Tomlinson. I had the pleasure of working with Nicole when I served on the council, and she always showed herself to be professional and reliable. So I want to thank her, thank her for the time that I spent with her and for the 15 years of service, and I hope she continues for another 15 years. And the same thing for Chuck Tomlinson. I didn't really interact with him, but I think it's the same thing. And then I just want to comment briefly on the presentation that's 8B, which I think most of these people are here for. This was something that I advocated for, and I had tried to get this presentation to us, and I know we got a little distracted by something called Ian, so I'm so glad to see it on the agenda today. And it's something that I think the council needs to consider, and I'm in support of it. And also, as a presentation, well, the Benita, you know, oh, I skipped one. Anyway, so, which is also another reason why I'm here is for 8B, because we have a tree of the season that is featuring a tree that exists in the community in which I live. So I think that's really exciting that we're having that, and, and I'm pretty proud of what we do in our community. And then the next one is 9C, where we're going to have a public hearing in the rec room for the infamous Quadrum Plan. Now, when you, you'll see, when you're working on the council, that we have all kinds of projects. We have near-term projects, we have medium-term projects, we have long-term projects, and then we have visionary projects. This is what I call a long-term project, and it's so nice to see that we're making progress here. So congratulations for keeping that project going, and I hope you do adopt the visionary project of, of the Rails to Trail. And finally, I do think I support 10A, that Councilman Corey has to, to make a formal agreement that, that the council is in favor of the Burt project. And that's all I have to say for today. Good luck.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. And remember, remind all members that coming up, this, this time right now is for public comment on items on the agenda. If you're here for the vacation or any of the public hearings, you will take comment at that point. And if you're here for items that are not on the agenda, then we'd ask you to wait till the end of the meeting when that, that appropriate time is ready.
Oh, yes.
Joe.
Anyone else? Additionally, there are a lot of people here today, a lot of people want to speak on this item. You'll be limited to four minutes each. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Thanks for hearing us today. My name is Deb Orton. I'm a resident of Benita Springs, and I'm co-founder and president of Friends of Burt, Friends of the Benita Estero Rail Trail. I'm here to speak on behalf to, on behalf of our more than 1,500 members. And so they didn't all send you emails, right? Fifteen hundred?
I don't know about that.
So Friends of Burt is an all-volunteer, nonprofit advocacy group whose mission is to organize public support for the acquisition of the unused and disintegrating Seminole Rail between Benita Beach Road and Alaco Road, and transform that rail corridor into a linear park with a multi-use trail. We started the group in September and have grown very quickly and continue to add members every day. Our goal is to have over 5,000 members by the end of this year, and we certainly are on track to do that. Not only do we have more than 1,500 members, communities in Estero and Benita Springs, like Pelican Landing, have formally endorsed this project. So let me read a quick list of those, and then I want to enter their letters into the, into the record. Pelican Landing, Benita Fairways, Benita Isles, Pelican Sound, Riverwood Plantation, Hacienda Village, Fountain Lakes have already secured unanimous endorsements from their boards to transform the rail to a trail and a linear park. Last week, we met with leaders of the Brooks communities, and we know Benita Bay and Hawthorne boards are discussing an endorsement this week. By the end of January, we anticipate having several more communities endorse the rail trail project. And I'll enter these letters in with the clerk. We know this trail won't be easy. We know that. If it were easy, we would have already done it. The 1,500 and growing Friends of Burt ask you, as our city council members, to become advocates for this rail trail project. Advocate for us at the MPO, at the county level. Advocate for us with the county and state representatives. Please view this project as an investment, an investment with excellent return, an investment in the future of Benita Springs, and ultimately, an investment in southwest Florida. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I put some pictures up. My name is Steve Gunther, and I live in Pelican Landing, as does, is with Amy. A community in Benita Springs with about 3,300 doors and a few, few hundred more to go. As you know, the Pelican Landing Community Association Board has endorsed the proposed Benita Estero Rail Trail, and I urge, we urge, you to do the same. We recognize the many benefits that this paved trail offers, the city of Benita Springs, its residents and its guests, from health improvements to social connections, from a commuting pathway for workers to new business opportunities, from safe, car-free walking and biking, to increased property values, this project has broad appeal. These pathways are everywhere in the state of Minnesota where I spend part of my, my year. My experience there convinces me that this is an exciting opportunity that we all should be supporting. On the personal front, at least three times a week when I'm not working on this activity, our cycling club bikes along Coconut Road and onto Imperial Parkway and beyond. Two of our members were struck by a car that ran a stop sign as they were pedaling south on our roads. This accident caused serious injuries to both of them, nearly, nearly paralyzing one of them. Dan Melcher, one of the two, basically concluded it's not safe to ride in Benita Springs and move to Venice, where there is a trail like this running from Venice to Sarasota. Jim Steiger, in a separate accident, this is Jim here, died in a crash on Imperial Parkway by the high school with debris in the road. Last March, Marilyn Price, one of Pelican Landing's board members at the time, was rear-ended by a car and ended up spending six weeks in the hospital. Another woman was recently killed last March in a bike crash, again, in our county. Many of our members have stopped biking because our roads are simply too dangerous. Biking is a phenomenal, non-weight-bearing exercise that can improve our lifespan and certainly our quality of life, but in Lee County, it is needlessly hazardous to our health. Providing a safe alternative for cyclists to exercise is absolutely needed. Converting the abandoned railway bed to a multi-used paved parkway is a long way to go to hell. Please support the proposed Benita Estero Rail Trail that's being considered. It will benefit Benita Springs and so many people in so many ways. Thank you very much for your time and attention, and thanks for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rob Orton, and I'm a resident of Benita Springs and a friend of Benita Estero Rail Trail. Much has been said about the improvements in safety and societal benefits the trails provide, my friend Steve just described. I believe those arguments are, for multi-use trails are well-established and compelling. So instead, I'd like to focus my comments on multi-use trail, how they contribute directly to economic benefits of those communities with trails. In 2018, the Outdoor Industry Association released a report that concluded the following benefits from all 40,000 miles of multi-use trails in the United States. Eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven billion, that's with a B, annual, annually in consumer spending, 7.6 million jobs generated, 59 billion annually in state and local tax revenues. These benefits are real. Numerous studies exist identifying how trails lead to significant return on investment for nearby communities, and many could be described as transformational to those communities. In 2020, the National Association of Realtors released a study that concluded 20% premium for existing homes near parks or trails that extend as far as three blocks away. Properties as much as a mile away from the established trails experienced three and a half to as much as 7% increased value from comparable properties for non-trail areas. Storefront occupancy rates also improved significantly with addition of multi-use trails. After an abandoned CSX railroad was transformed into Pinellas Trail, downtown Dunedin, Florida, storefront occupancy rate went from 70% to 95%. And there are very similar, many examples are similar all over the country for newly-established trails. In 2018, the Friends of the Legacy Trail commissioned an independent study to identify benefits of an eight-mile extension to the existing 10-mile legacy trail in Sarasota County. Real estate values compared with and without trail extension scenarios for houses within one mile of the legacy trail extension. The conclusion was that with-trail scenarios added 3% to real estate values totaling $123 million over 30 years for Sarasota, or 4.1 million increase annually. As a result, Sarasota County projected to collect $11 million in new real estate taxes over 30 years. The study also concluded that many of the 225,000 individuals that use the trail on an annual basis come from outside the county. These extended state tourists are drawn to the region because of the trail. They rent homes, they stay in hotels, they dine in restaurants, and purchase food in grocery stores, bringing benefits to Sarasota County of over $71 million over 30 years, or $2.3 million annually. As a result, Sarasota County is projected to collect an additional $2.7 million in new sales tax from hotel rental restaurant over 30 years. Again, much of these income streams come from trail users, do not live in the area. The study also... Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Emily Porter. You may have gotten an email or two from me. You did, good. But anyways, I live here in Benita Springs. I live in Cedar Creek. Yes, those.
Yeah, a couple of them, yeah.
Thank you, everybody. The city of Benita Springs recent, you know this, recently conducted an evaluation appraisal survey, better known as the EARS survey, and a lot of people in this room filled out that survey. And the findings were presented last Thursday, and I want to make a few points that are relevant to the discussion today. And I'm just going to go over like five other questions. So number one was, what three things are most important to you when thinking about quality of life in Benita Springs? Seventy-two percent selected the number-one answer, which was outdoor recreation and open space. The second question, what types of amenities do you think are most needed in Benita Springs? A whopping 87% of respondents selected the number-one answer, which was parks, open space, and recreation use. Number five was, please assign a level of priority for each objective concerning transportation over the next 25 years. The number-one question, the number-one answer was, improve multimodal options, including biking and walking facilities. Number six was, what would most enhance your willingness and ability to walk and cycle in the city of Benita Springs? Again, 80% said, of the respondents selected the number-one answer was separate and protected bike and pedestrian pathways. And that's what we're talking about here today. And number seven was, what can the Benita Springs City Council do to improve overall health within the community? Seventy-six percent of the respondents selected the number-one answer, increase accessibility to outdoor recreation, bicycling, and hiking facilities. The last question I want to talk about was, local governments may have a variety of tools to protect natural resources. What do you think would be the most advantageous? And these are the top three answer, answers. Conservation easements along sensitive land areas, which is what this rail trail is. It goes over three major tributaries and minor tributaries as well. It's very sensitive land. Land acquisition or purchase, this is what we're trying to do. We need to actually purchase this land. And then greenway corridor planning, this is a greenway. This is a corridor. This is 14 miles of a park-like setting that will enhance the community overall. And the people have spoken, you know, and they're asking for open space, they're asking for parks, they're asking for places to recreate and walk safely. And, you know, this is to increase the quality of life here. This is near and dear to our heart, to all of us, all these people. This is why you've got standing people in this room right now. And, you know, right at this moment, we have a prime opportunity to do all the above, to check all the boxes off with this project. And, you know, the toxic rail line can be removed, and a multi-use path for walking, running, and biking should take its place. Right now, we have Sun Trail dollars available to help us build the trail. That may go away if we sit on our hands and we don't take advantage of that. They will help us build the trail, but that's not always going to be there. We know it might not always be a priority trail. The Seminole Gulf Railway, the Fay family, because of the hurricane, they're more likely to sell this land to us. If, in the future, they might not be. So we've got a prime opportunity, again, right now. Once it is built, the Benita Estero Rail Trail will be the crown jewel of the community, just like the Legacy Trail is in Venice and Sarasota. This is something that will help restore the Benita downtown area, and I've looked at your bios, and that's important to all of you, I know it is, and this will only enhance that. As a strong, as strong community leaders, this trail will be part of your legacy and perhaps your greatest long-term accomplishment. Thank you for your support in bringing this trail to our community.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Yes. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to speak before you this morning. My name is Bruce Ackerman, and I reside at the vines. I am presenting a resolution and asking that this council consider voting favorably for this resolution, which endorses a bike path from Benita Springs Road to Estero Parkway. That bike path alone would accomplish a 12-mile linear park so that any biker, walker, or jogger could actually travel up to 24 miles back and forth. I am submitting the draft resolution to the clerk as soon as I finish, and I am giving her sufficient copies for each of you to have and read it through. I also emailed it to the clerk yesterday. I also welcome any questions, as this agenda is, this initiative is an agenda item this morning, so I believe we can have a dialogue. I invite each of you to visit the vines prior to accepting any of the Rails to Trails initiative. As they say, a picture is worth a thousand words, and you need to see how this proposed bike path bisecting the vines' community will cause serious safety issues for those on the path conflicting with our two-vehicle crossings, as well as security and environmental issues for our guarded gated community. Council members Fred Forbes and Laura Carr have already visited and seen this firsthand, so I also urge you to ask them what they saw at the vines. Please respond to our email invitation and come visit us. We can show you how serious these impacts will be to our community in terms of safety, security, and environmental. I will stay after the meeting to discuss a visit with any of you who can make the time to do so. We offered several alternatives to the MPO planner to avoid bisecting our community, including two other paths through our community which were summarily dismissed by the MPO planner, and the use of the existing bike paths, which are all along Estero Parkway, which were built in the last two years, and the bike path along Three Oaks. They were already built with taxpayer dollars, and they will afford the more serious biker an extended biking experience. However, just ending at Estero Parkway is approximately 12 miles itself. And if some say those bike paths are not safe enough, then spend far less dollars than buying the entire railroad and make them safer. They're already there. They already exist and should be used first. Finally, note that the MPO planning report does not even show the vines on its map of the proposed rail trail. Why is that? No other community that has endorsed the rail trail is directly affected, as is the vines. We asked the MPO planner to point out any other gated golf course community in Florida or in the entire United States where a public bike path bisected a private gated golf course community. So far, there is no answer because no government body has put such a path in place. And even if they come up with one, what does that say to you and to the MPO? It says it does not belong bisecting the vines. And we urge you today, and we urge you in the future, when you vote, to please adopt our resolution. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everyone.
We are not allowed to applaud, inhibit the other people. Please, please remain quiet. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diana Ackerman, and I am a resident of the vines' community. Residents of the vines' community are in support of creating a linear park, and we can be counted in the growing number of supporters. I actually would love a blue shirt. I would. While we recognize the merits of such a recreational amenity, it should never be at the expense of sacrificing the safety and security of a community. While in support of the trail, we are opposed to that trail running through the center of our gated community. Our issues are not made lightly. We have serious valid concerns. We have been trying, and we will continue to try, to work with all entities involved to make sure the trail comes to fruition. We are all one community, and we should be able to create a plan that does no harm while meeting its goal. I find it disheartening when comments are made discounting our concerns without visiting the vines. Only by visiting the vines can you see the validity of our concerns and then work jointly with us on a solution. Our concerns are safety. We are all concerned about safety, and no one wants anyone injured anywhere. The number of vehicles, golf carts, walkers, bikers, et cetera, that would cross our main areas of concerns are in the hundreds of thousands. And when combined with the proposed 600 projected path users, there is not a shadow of a doubt that there will be collisions, injuries, and altercations. This is a serious concern. We cannot move one unsafe area of concern to a different area that also has safety concerns. Security. We currently have little vandalism or security concerns. A recent speaker suggested that 600,000 people having open access to our gated community would be like having additional security watchers. As much as I would like to believe that most of our trail users are just out for a recreational afternoon, I do strongly believe that this open access would allow individuals with ill intent to be on property. Also, this trail would literally be feet from our fairways, which provides easy access to the epicenter of our community, where we have our bathrooms, water stations, snack areas, clubhouse, et cetera. It would put our residents in precarious interactions to the potentially 600,000 users that can easily, readily leave our path, our gated, in our gated community. It has been suggested that we put up gates, signs, fencing, and high netting. This community is our home. This is not a public golfing range. This would cause disruption to our lives, would be aesthetically detrimental, and would negatively affect our home values. Every council member or member of a neighboring community that has respectfully taken the time to visit the vines has immediately understood the obvious issues and agrees there should be an alternative answer while creating this project. Please, come see the vines, so that together we can find a win-win solution, option that benefits all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Tom Ravelky. I also live at the vines, and I am on the vines' Community Association Board, as well as a member of the, of the Estero Country Club. Mayor and members of council, thank you for allowing us to speak to you today and having an open mind as to our concerns. We are requesting your support regarding the proposed linear park along the railway from Benita Beach Road ending at Estero Parkway. Like most people who moved to this, this area of Florida, we love and enjoy the outdoors as well. We are also very much in favor of having a bike-walking trail, but what we are opposed to, of course, is it going through the middle of our secure and gated community. To better understand our position, I would like to share with you a little bit about our community. We are the only neighborhood being severed in half if options one or two are chosen for this bike trail. To our knowledge, there is no gated golf course community in the United States with a public bike path running through the middle of it. This path through our community takes away our security and leaves us vulnerable and open to everyone 24/7. As I said, the vines are gated community, and there are 440 doors. Nearly 300 of those 440 homes are on the far side of the track, meaning the residents need to cross the railway both coming and going each time. Owners would be crossing this proposed path at a minimum of twice daily for trips to the grocery, shopping, or doctor appointments, presenting multiple opportunities for dangerous collisions. In addition, countless vendors, landscapers, maintenance workers, and all too often emergency vehicles must cross this track twice. At other public crossings for the trail, there are traffic controls, which are not present in our private community, where there are over 300,000 vehicle crossings each year. Estero Country Club has many members from both inside and outside our community. They too cross those tracks twice whenever they come to our clubhouse. Our clubhouse is not just a golf clubhouse, it is the center of our community for golf, pickleball, tennis, social activities, exercise classes, and dining. This is where we all congregate seven days a week. As well, during every round of golf, golfers cross the rail by a separate cart path over the tracks at least twice. Those totals, over 100,000 cart crossings each year. The Estero Country Club is also a The Astero Country Club is also a certified Audubon Cooperative Sanctuary, which is endorsed by the USGA. Any changes to the rail detrimentally affect sensitive preservation areas and wildlife habitats. There are options for the trail that do not destroy an aesthetics and integrity of our gated community. Our goal today is that you understand bringing the trail through our neighborhood and golf club is destructive to our security, our environment, our safety, as well as the safety of those using the trail. Please consider the golden rule: Do not allow in our neighborhood that which you would not want in the middle of your own neighborhood. We would love to see this become a 12- to 14-mile trail between Benita Beach Road and Astero Parkway. Nobody would want this in their backyard, and I'm sorry, we don't either. Thank you for your time today. We invite you to please come visit The Vines and see firsthand what we're talking about. We look forward to having your support. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Next. No more? Okay. Okay, we'll move along then. Thank you. Thank you all. Proclamation and presentations. Nicole, Nicole Perino, please go forward, and City Manager and I.
And Chuck.
Chuck.
And Chuck.
Yeah, we'll do you next.
This is a great time for the Republican Party. A great time to be awarding our Parks and Recreation Director, Nicole Perino. For 15 years, we have 26 parks, I believe, in the 26 parks in the city of Benita Springs. And I'm sure she would love to build a trail park. She likes the responsibility, and she has some really good help. So I am really happy to award this to you. And Arlene, our City Manager, would like to make some comments.
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Nicole. One of the things that she probably never thought she'd jump into is the different roles she has to take on as a Parks and Recreation Manager. The adoption skills that she has is a blessing to us in our service. And, for example, when COVID hit and every park was shut down, the two of us sat down and created a way for every employee to continue working and multitask and provide new duties to them. So we were able to preserve all our entire staff through that, and that's because of her hard work and dedication. And I will tell you, there's not a moment on a weekend at 4:00 a.m. or when a park, unfortunately, some children decide to jump onto the ban shell and have some unruly fun, that she doesn't get that call and then gracefully waits till 7:00 a.m. to call me to let me know it's already handled and taken care of. So we do talk multiple times a weekend, and of course, she's on our emergency management team and has been able to just step in and take every moment to adopt to whatever challenges is coming our way. So we greatly appreciate your dedication to the city and to the citizens of Benita. So thank you.
Thank you. Take it rid of these people. They stay forever. Charlie, Chuck, Tom, there he is. Charles Tomlinson, another 15-year veteran of Benita Springs, only 20 years old, and he's been here 15. He's with the Neighborhood Watch that keeps Benita Springs as nice as it is. He has, he has to tell people, "No, you gotta cut your grass when it's four feet high." Stuff like that, you know? He has a tough job, and he's been with us for 15 years. And I really appreciate Chuck. I worked with Chuck before we became a city. I didn't even know we had code enforcement because it was so far away from the county seat. So thank you, Chuck. Arlene, I'd like to make some comments, please. Thank you.
So Chuck is one of our unsung heroes here. Not always does he have the opportunity to interact with council, but he definitely interacts with the public very regularly. And one of the things that's so unique about Chuck is that he can deliver a message that someone does not want to hear with the kindest, gentlest voice. So what I understand is usually I get a call that someone's unhappy with the decision to code enforcement, but the gentleman who told me was the nicest he could be on the phone. So I appreciate your dedication for 15 years. It is a very tough job that you do, and you have a calming presence to those folks that you deal with. So that we greatly appreciate, and your dedication to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jack, round the table. I am the liaison. I'm the liaison with the, come on up here, Jack. I'm the liaison with the Tree Advisory Board, and Jack is, Jack is the chairman of the Tree Advisory Board. I'll let Jack explain what we do here.
Yeah, and I wanted to thank everyone for allowing us to use this forum to present this Tree of the Season Award. Benita Springs is listed as a tree city by the Arbor Day Foundations, and one of the things that we could do as an advisory board is award local citizen or businesses who have a special tree. And so it's with our great pleasure that we get to award Grace Lennon, who is representing Pelican Landing and its wonderful Royal Ponciana, which sits in front of their association, their community association. So Grace, are you around? There you are.
There we are. That Royal Ponciana is a lot of work. You do a wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you.
Beautiful tree.
Okay. Here we go on to the consent agenda of the MPO.
No, no, we have one more item. The presentation.
The MPO presentation.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. MPO, most important guy in town right now.
I don't know about that.
These people want, these people are here to see, listen.
I know it seems like every second time I come here, there's no parking for anybody. So I don't know what that means.
Yeah, there you go.
So Don Scott with the Lee County MPO. We're here to present today to get your comments. We will be presenting to our board the final study in March. We are just seeking comments that we can bring to the board and talk about. We aren't looking for any action today, and I think when we get to the board, it's going to be just accepting the study because we do have some questions that still remain out there that we're not trying to get everybody to commit yet till we answer those questions. And obviously, you'll hear some of them today. With me is Ron Gagoi with our staff at the MPO, Ned Byer with Volkard, who will do the presentation, the bulk of it, has done the study as well. And also, Charles Hines is here today as well. He works for the Trust for Public Land. He might be somebody that you want to ask some questions of because he's gone through this. He was a Sarasota Commissioner when they were doing the Legacy Trail, and now he works for Trust for Public Land, who is also looking at the right-of-way, of course, as part of this process. So will we bring up Ned to do the presentation?
Okay. Let's see where it's at. I think it's down here.
City Attorney, are we having a public comment on this?
No, we won't have any additional public comments.
Go ahead. This is forwards, backwards. This is your digital laser. Yes. All right.
Okay. Good morning.
Morning. It is a beautiful day in Benita.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman, City Manager, audience, thank you for inviting me. I'm here to listen, learn, and inform. My name is Ned Byer, work for Volkard Incorporated. I've been project manager for, it's almost two years now, this feasibility study, and here to, as Don said, just provide a progress report to you, provide you some details. And I think the, some of the speakers that you just heard of feel very passionate about this project. This is a visionary project. It is feasible. It is technically feasible to build, and that was the purpose of this study, much like any capital improvement project that the city undertakes. And that's your world as a councilman. You understand that CIP process where it starts as a plan, then you seek funding, gets into more engineering and design, and then ultimately construction. All of that can occur with this project, and we're trying to meet the guidelines to make it feasible for others to pay the bulk of this project. And that's the State Sun Trail Program, and I'll get into that. And excuse me for my voice. I woke up with this, so. But you see the third bullet there: Maintain eligibility for state sun trail funds. That's been real key to this project because we're part of the bigger picture here. There's a statewide shared-use trail network. We're part of the Southwest Corridor, this segment in particular, and Benita Springs and Astero is part of that corridor. So maintain eligibility for sun trail program, that's for the capital construction costs. More on that later. As Don said, we're wrapping up our technical work now. We'll be presenting the feasibility study results to the MPO Board in March. And with that, let's see here. Again, I'm part of a study team. Some of the members here, you've worked with Bill Spakowski, a local planner, has done a lot of work here, Selamolar. So we've had a really strong team that know the community well. A little bit about the Rails to Trails. It's been mentioned that this is like one of, you see in Florida, there's over 65 Rails to Trails, similar type of projects now. The first one was built in 1988 in Tallahassee, the St. Mark's Trail. There's over 2,200 nationwide. And closer to home, the Legacy Trail right down the road in Sarasota County, that's kind of been the prototype for us to follow and kind of the vision that we have for this project. Number one, it's in your backyard. Number two, Sarasota County had to acquire and abandon our rail line with Seminole Gulf and CSX successfully. And you can see the timeline there, but they actually purchased the corridor in 2004. It's about just under 20 miles in length, and they just opened up another segment all the way to downtown Sarasota. It's been very successful, seen as a linear park, used by a lot of people. I mentioned the Sun Trail Network. It's a statewide program. The Southwest Corridor Trail, you can see there's a line from Tampa South all the way to Collier County. And so this Astero-Benita segment of the trail is part of a larger network. It extends into Fort Myers, into Cape Coral, into Charlotte County. So I'm going to turn this over to Charles Hines. He's with the Trust for Public Lands because one of the big questions you have is the rail line, right? It's been sitting there. It's, I think the last time it's been used is about 15 years ago. The tracks are still in place. Most of it's in pretty poor condition, unmaintained. But we need that rail right-of-way for this project to proceed forward. So the Trust for Public Lands, Charles Hines, he's been negotiating with Seminole Gulf Rail for the last two years. I believe your city management has been involved in these meetings. There was an appraisal done, and this is the results of the appraisal. There was a market value for the 13 miles or so, over $70 million. And just to break down the numbers, we broke that down by jurisdiction. So you could see the portion within the city of Benita Springs is a little bit over $28 billion. And the rail corridor width, it's mostly about 130 feet wide, narrower in a few spots. But this gives you a sense of at least the rail land, the land for the Rails to Trails project, a relative cost broken down by jurisdiction. But I'll let Mr. Hines tell you more.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity. Who's controlling this? Ned, you? Can I ask you a favor? Go back one slide because that's a big number. And I don't want to sit on that while we're talking about this. So, yeah, let's look at our state and our region, and let me tell you why, you know, why I'm here personally and then what TPL's role in this is to help you because this is a big project. You clearly see that your community is enthusiastic about it. We're here from the Trust for Public Lands to help you, local government, get there. Personally, which is unique in how I met the Trust for Public Land when I was on the Sarasota County Commission, we are basically from Sarasota County, we were where you are about 10 to 15 years ago. Exactly the same place, working with the same owners of the rail. So they came to me and said, "Can we help you?" Because your community wants this, and this is what we can do. So TPL is a 50-year-old national nonprofit that specializes in trails and parks all across our country. And we come in and we try to help local government negotiate deals. We don't keep the land. We put it under contract with a takeout partner, which in this situation, we have four jurisdictions involved. Makes it a little more difficult. But that's what we can do. Your city attorney, your city manager will tell you, you know, local government, buying land, it's difficult with sunshine law and all that. So we play that intermediary role and help you do this. So we were in this, when I say "we," TPL was in this probably two, two and a half years ago, and you saw the appraisal. And that's why I said move back because everyone goes, "Ugh, that's a lot of money." And the railroad at that time said, "It's not enough." We had people in local government that said, "That's way too much." So what happened is we kind of, at that point, say, two and a half years ago, just agreed to disagree and stepped away. We didn't, relationships were still there, but we just had to stop. Circumstances have changed. New people have moved into the community. You have new elected officials. You heard earlier, you had a nasty hurricane come through. And what's occurred is a couple phone calls were made, and I'll use the word "reengage." So Seminole Gulf called us, meaning TPL, and my partner Doug Hattaway, who did the deal up in Sarasota with them. They trust us, they believe us, they know that if they do a contract with us, we can get a deal done. That's where we are today. I can't bring you a number today. I can't bring you a contract today. But everything's changed, I'd say, in the last few months that we're talking again, and that's the most important thing. So we will work with you all, work with Seminole Gulf, work with your community. And why I say this is, you heard Ned say, "This is feasible." It's feasible, but is it doable? Do you have the money? Do you have the public support? And how do we do it? So their report talks about the whole rail corridor with four jurisdictions and a big price tag. What happened in Sarasota County and also in Pinellas County is they didn't buy it all at once. It wasn't done all at one time. And so when I got involved with this rail study and heard what happened historically, we've kind of re-engaged and said... we've kind of re-engaged and said, well, what if we break it into segments? And you've heard conversations this morning where folks from the vines are actually advocating for that and talking about it. And so we're looking at those potential ways to break it up into a segment, less expensive, maybe only dealing with one or two jurisdictions, maybe three if we bring Collier in, because it's a very small, I think it's only like a mile and a half into Collier County. Get that under contract, and then look at the ways to fund it. Way we fund it in Sarasota County is, was unique. We did it all by an ad valorem property tax increase. And I sat on the county commission and said, boy, I don't like raising taxes on my residents. So we put it to a referendum, passed by 73%, $65 million. I was the chair that year. I signed the loan documents for that. And today, that entire segment is open. So if we do it right, this isn't something that's 10 years down the road. With a rail corridor, you take the tracks up, and it can be done in a short period of time. But you as leaders need to carry the flag if you believe in it. And if your residents want it, and that's what residents in Sarasota County did, they wanted it. So much that they said, tax me, put it on my house, and we'll pay for it. We don't necessarily have to do that here. There's other people's money that we can go after. So that's our role. Sorry, I know I'm taking way too long, but this is a big deal for your community. It's a lot of money, and it's a big decision. But in the end, it has transformed Sarasota County with hooking up parks and open space, economic redevelopment, mental health, physical health. It's been a game changer for us, as it's been up in Pinellas County. So it's not like you have to go out to Colorado to see this, you know? Hour up the road, you can see it. So thank you for letting me talk to you all this morning.
Thank you, Charles.
Excuse me, one second.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, could we ask some questions?
I don't think so. I think, yeah, wait till they're done.
I think it's up to the council, but I don't know if this is the, that was the end of the presentation or not.
No.
No. Okay. Do you want to, do you want to ask questions in between or wait till the end?
Wait till the end.
Wait till the end.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hines. So that was really good information, and I'm really thankful for the Trust for Public Lands. It's been a separate, separate process. They're not part of our team, but we've been coordinating together. So we've been listening and making sure we're on the same page. The other question I want to speak to is how the trail would be funded. So as I mentioned before, we're doing this study to qualify for state money. And there are strings attached, as you know. So the state money would be used for the trail design. There would be another engineering design study following this, this process. And then the capital construction, which the capital construction would consist of a 12-foot-wide paved trail. That's the minimum standard of the state for the Sun Trail program, 12-foot-wide paved trail. It would include the safety crossings, either flashing signals, possibly a bike pad overpass at some of the more high-volume streets that you can think of. And these streets have, you know, 20, 30,000 cars a day that may require a bike pad overpass, whereas most of the local streets probably have maybe 1,000 cars a day. And that can be done by crosswalks and signage and things like that. Well-tested, well-proven, lots of trails, Legacy Trail, Pinellas Trail, all over Florida and the country. Another question is, how would the trail be maintained? Operating and maintenance costs would fall on the responsibility of the municipalities and the counties. Couple ways that could work. You could do it outright, especially if the first segment is a Benita Springs-only You could work with the county, Lee County Government, maybe pay them to provide the maintenance. Longer term, it makes some sense to have Lee County as the operator and maintainer of the trail, because ultimately, this will be a countywide project. But we don't know when that's going to happen. But those responsibilities would fall on local governments and the counties. Landscaping and amenities, that would be something else. It would fall on local governments and the counties. And that could be drinking fountains, park benches, things that you think of in a linear park. The state funds don't pay for that. So I hope that helps a little bit answer that question, because I know when we gave a similar presentation at Astero about a month ago, the railroad right-of-way situation and how the trail would be funded were really the two primary questions that we, we heard from people. Okay, so just, I'm going to run through this quicker, but the study area running south to north, Benita Springs is at the lower part of your screen, Benita Beach Road. Alaco Road is on the north end. And study area included all the way from 75 over to 41. And we looked at connections going both north and south. The study schedule, I won't get into that, other than to say, it'll be two years in March since we have the notice to proceed for this project. We would have been here earlier if not for the hurricane. So. So real quick, the study methodology, we started, we did like a tiering process with our technical team, which by the way, included, we had two city staff members, your Public Works Director, David, and Nicole. They were both on the study management team from the start. We had like weekly, weekly calls in the beginning, and then we had monthly meetings. But we started with seven alternatives. Actually, we started with over a dozen alternatives. We really quickly reduced that to seven alternatives. And you can see the four criteria and the screening process. That was further developed to really three possible feasible alternatives. We looked at connectivity, project readiness, service, and user experience. These were the three alternatives that scored best in our technical analysis. A Rails to Trails project, which would be the full conversion. A rail with trail, where you would maintain the railroad if it were operational, and then a smaller footprint would be used to build a trail on either one side or the other, the east side or the right side of the trail. And then we looked at a road option too, because what if it's not feasible to build a trail on the rail? What else can we do? So we looked at a road option. These are just some of the, some of the things that we did in the technical analysis. But we looked at everything from the environmental assessment, we looked at the bridges, we looked at the utilities, roadway crossings. We did a conceptual design, and I believe you have a full draft report in your packet so you can see some of the details. This is alternative number one. This was the full Rails to Trails conversion. By the way, this was in our public meeting process, and on the website, this was the most popular selected alternative. And I'll get in, more into that later. But you can see, that's a pretty good picture showing, this is on a utility corridor, but it's sort of the same concept. You can see the paved trail. Planning level, construction costs. This is a planning study. It's not an engineering study, but we did look at planning costs per the Department of Transportation, District One, their cost tables. We looked at both Collier County, Lee County costs, and we saw that it's about $4 to $6 million per mile. $4 to $6 million per mile. Your segment here in Benita Springs is about six miles long. So do the math, it's $20, $25 billion on the capital side. There's about 20 rail trail crossings, most of those are local roads. You can see some of the utility providers are already, some of them have agreements with Seminole Gulf Rail. So there's utility use in that corridor. Some of the opportunities and challenges, I'll just say this, I think the opportunity with alternative one is to develop more of a linear park-like vision. And I think in our public meetings, at least that I've heard, people really like that concept of, this is more than a trail, this is a park. The second alternative I mentioned is still building a trail, but only on part of the railroad right-of-way, either on the east side or the west side, using much less right-of-way. So not the full 130 feet, but something smaller than that. You could build a trail with the safety standards for about 25 feet, 25 to 30 feet. And the rail, the rail line would exist. They would coexist, and there's examples all over the country that do this. The construction costs are actually more. And again, it would require agreement with Seminole Gulf Rail. And I think some of the challenges here, especially because if you think about it, the trail would not be as accessible to the community, because it would be on either one side of the rail line or the other. And that's, that's pretty significant. And then also, I think there's a little bit more complexity in dealing with Seminole Gulf Rail, where they may want to negotiate the full 130 feet and not just a portion of the rail corridor. The third option was looking at, let's build a rail along adjacent roadways, some of which already exist. There are some sidewalks in place already, some bike lanes, but it's really not a complete This option, surprisingly, to our study team too, is more expens, yes, sir?
While you have these maps up, can you show where this Vine Country Club is? Can you show where it is?
Sure.
On any of these maps? I don't see it.
I can.
Yeah. It's, I think it's an alternative one.
Yeah, use your own chart.
I was going to show you.
I'm sorry here.
That's a concern of the people.
Right.
Is there an alternative around it?
Well, it's, on this map, it's, it's in Astero, so it's, it's much further to, it's the top half of this screen, actually the top north part of the screen here.
Maybe the vines person can point it out?
Yeah.
Anybody here from the vines?
I can, I can point it out, I just don't have a...
I can tell you approximately where it is, but it isn't on the map. I can tell you that. It's around here.
No, 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 it's further north.
It's further up.
It's further up.
Next community is up here, Bellagano, we're over here. It's not indicated on the map.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a way around it?
Are we asking questions?
I'll go back to the vines' question if I may.
Where he is.
Thank you. I'm pretty much almost through here. Let me just share, this was the concept, if we do follow, if we build a trail along adjacent roadways going north to south. Alaco Road is on the north. It could be built in the right-of-way of Alaco Road. And then you see 12 Oaks, or Three Oaks Parkway, running north to south. We're still in Astero and over Broadway. Again, the, the, my point here was, it was surprising to the consultant team how expensive this alternative was. It's because the rights-of-way is actually pretty limited. Three Oaks Parkway as an example, where you think you've got enough in there, but you really don't. It's a lot tighter than you might think, and then you have to deal with drainage and other things. So the cost of right-of-way really bumps that up significantly. The other thing is, it's unlikely that the state Sun Trail funds would, that project would qualify for state Sun Trail funds. So the roadway option would probably have to be paid by the local governments. The other mention, point I'll mention, the roadway option, the number of road-trail crossings jumps from 20 to 96. And if you think about it, that's because of the number of private businesses, you know, everything from a McDonald's to entrance for an apartment condo to, it just makes it really more hazardous, especially for users. And it is nothing like the park experience, which I think is the vision for the Rails to Trails project.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry here. So I'm going to finish up here, just got a few more slides. The public involvement, I'll mention very quickly. On June 2nd, we held a meeting like this, actually, June 2nd was our meeting, our public meeting workshop in Astero at the Community Center. It was attended by about 120 people, very well-attended, full room. We had a presentation at the time. We had boards, displays set up. We had a lot of input. Many of the people in this room, I believe, were at that meeting, both people that liked the project or have questions about the project. It was a, it was a very, very good, passionate meeting. You can see 117 attendees. Here's some pictures. And I'll mention this too. So here's the comments to date, and I combined this alternative one and two, which basically is the Rails to Trails option, just under 1,400 comments to date, generally of support. Then alternative three, the road alignment, there are about 850 comments to date. So that's, we continue to, the NPO, which is overseeing and managing this project, continues to receive public comments to date and will through the conclusion of this study. So with that, if you would like Mr. Hines to be back up here, or Mr. Scott to answer your questions, or myself, I'll be happy to. So thank you for your attention, really appreciate it.
Hey Laura, please.
Okay, so Mr. Hines, and you could stay standing there. You said that the railroad reached out to you? So are they more flexible and realistic about how much they want?
I think what they said is they're willing to take enough, I mean, I would say I'm not privileged to discuss and disclose everything publicly, but they're willing to take a look at that appraisal, maybe a little differently than they did before. And so, yes, where before, I would say that we weren't in the same ballpark. And I don't know if I mentioned this either, is that as a nonprofit, we can't overpay for property. We have to have a true appraisal that's based upon that. And so we would never bring you something, or we would never put it under contract, you know, unless it's based upon a third-party independent appraisal. Appraisals, we can differ, and we all know that things have maybe changed in the last six months or year. Some argue property values are up, some argue it's down. And some will say, well, it depends on the particular property anyway, because real estate's unique. And I, you open the door, but one thing I want to, as an elected official, when you talk about alternative three, and whether or not you can use eminent domain or not for trails, it's really tough for a constituent that you represent to come in and say, I'm going to take 10 feet of your front yard, or 10 feet of your business property. So I just say, keep that in mind on alternative three, because we dealt with that with sidewalks and different things. And you think what people want, and it's a no-brainer, sometimes it's not when you're taking a piece of their property. Thanks.
Anything else?
Yes. No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so then you said that the funding for this would be from the state?
We're, we're hope to quali, we're qualifying for the state funds. It's a request to the state from the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We're competing statewide for projects. There's, there's limited money. I will say, the NPO has been very successful at getting money from the state for the program. I'll give you a couple of examples. They funded both a planning study and a design study for the city of Fort Myers for the JYLP trail, which is part of this project. They also qualified to build... They also qualified to build a, what is it, around $6, $7 million overpass over Colonial Boulevard with state Sun Trail funds, which has already been built, so you'll see construction for an overpass over Colonial Boulevard, it's part of this project. And then also in the city of Cape Coral, the MPO was successful in both getting design funds and construction funds, and part of the Sun Trail project is being built in Cape Coral. So the MPO's been very aggressive, supportive, and then I'm sure they would have success with this project.
And so would they be the same entity that would commit to maintaining?
No.
I know, so that would be Lee.
Well, if you, if you remember that slide, it's, it's really a decision of Lee County, Astero, Benita, other, you know, it's local government that needs to provide the maintenance for, for the project, however that works out.
But the purchase, who's got the big nut, the 70 million, who's that, where's that coming?
Well, as, Mr., this is probably Mr. Heinz, but it's, it's, it's a combination of the four local governments here participating, and I'm, I'm including Collier County, even though they have only a small segment of the Rails to Trails project. But it's one of the four, or a combination of the four local governments yet to be seen. And again, the other thing is to remember, we're trying to build this project incrementally, okay? So we're not talking about that big upfront, 70 million, or whatever that figure turns out to be, if it's only the first six or seven miles, if Seminole Gulf Rail is willing to go that course, then it's substantially less than that. It's probably, you know, 20 million, or, you know, something far less than 70.
And one last point, so if we did that, would you go through the Vine's private gated community, or would you listen to their alternative and go through the easement, which is fiscally makes more sense?
Sure.
And safety-wise?
At your invitation, I did go out to the Vine's community, saw, saw things firsthand, and there were some alternatives that, there were some problems with the, you know, you approved some impacts, but then there were some problems with the alternatives within the Vine's community. So, and I understand that. But that's really not where we are with this study. I mean, there's gonna be more of a detailed design study to follow this, where they're gonna have to go back. But I will say, if suddenly we had success, or the Trust for Public Land's local government had success with Seminole Gulf Rail, say in the next six months or year, this project could proceed right into just this portion of it. The Vine's would, that, that decision about what happens in the Vine's community wouldn't have to be decided today. You know, that's down the road.
But my worry is that the train gets started, and then when it does come down the road, so sorry, here we come through your property.
Well--
So, could there be a guarantee that you would not do that?
Well, that's not, that's the local government, that's not me. I mean, I understand your point, and it's a good point, because before what I do now, I worked for Pinellas County, and I was the, the project manager for the Pinellas Trail, going through the same process. And, you know, that was interesting, because we built the first five miles, and we had, you know, a lot of critics, as you have with these projects. And once the trail was built, operational, it's amazing how people said, you know what, I really like that project, build it behind, you know. So that can happen too, you can change minds with the project. But I understand your point, so it's, so I think that would just have to be a decision of the local governments to figure that out. And Mr. Heinz may have experience with that as chairman of the county commission, because he may have dealt with that, but--
Does, does the railroad go through the Vine's property?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question.
Yes.
Are you finished, Laura? Anybody?
Unless Mr. Heinz has something to add that you could answer further, or no?
Maybe I'll answer this as a prior elected official, I know that, I never liked another city or another county telling me what to do. I like to cooperate and work with them, so I think your point's very well taken. However, like Ned's saying is, what's best for the residents of Benita Springs, and this would be a project that would benefit Benita Springs and southern Lee County and northern Collier County. And people change, attitudes change over time, there's always a concern about crime and so forth, but national statistics say trails, you know, I'm not here to argue with the Vine's, it's their right and their position. But we've built many parks in different places that initially neighborhoods and HOAs were against, and then all of a sudden, they're very much for it. And this, in Sarasota County, the Lexi Trail goes right through Palmer Ranch, which has many gated communities. It's not a gated community, but within it, there are gated communities, and the trail goes right through it. And so anytime anyone's buying or selling a house, that's the first thing they mention. Again, as I said earlier, property's unique, I've not had the opportunity to walk through the Vine's, and I'd love to.
Because there is also a safety issue.
Absolutely, and the point they made about the golf course, and, you know, you don't want people using their clubhouse, that's private property, absolutely good point. But I think it's things that with more, you know, conversations that we can discuss, and if there needs to be a workaround, you know, then let's talk about that. Because what I don't, I failed to mention is, this portion is part of the Florida Gulf Coast Trail, that goes from Tampa, St. Pete, all the way to Naples. So we're trying to fill in these gaps, so that you're not just an isolated seven-mile trail out and back. You're connected to all of southwest Florida. So the people in the Vine's, maybe they don't want it through their neighborhood, but I think they believe, and by supporting this, in this community, recognize all the other benefits that trails bring. We just gotta have open and honest conversation about how to make it work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nigel.
Nigel.
Nigel. Thank you for the presentation, comment, and then a couple of questions for you. I'm a new councilman, so as far as my responsibility, I appreciate the passion of the folks from Astero, but we're the Benita Springs City Council, so we're going to do what's best for our city, we're gonna work with your folks. I've heard nothing from Astero, have not received any information from Astero City Council that I'm aware of. So I think that's one of those things that we would want to take into account, but at the end of the day, the only decision we're gonna make is for the city of Benita Springs, my understanding. I know people think that we get these studies and we put them in the back of our car and we don't look at them, so thanks to the weather, I read 146 pages plus this past weekend, and the last couple days, I learned more about railroads than I really ever wanted to know. The four to $6 million price tag, so let's say it's 5 million, does that include the removal of the railroad ties and disposal of them?
Yes.
That's a good thing. Anybody know how many railroad ties there are in a mile? 3,200. They weigh 150 pounds to 200 pounds apiece, but they can be recycled. That's a good question, I know we're gonna get that. There is no recycling facility in Florida that I'm aware of that takes the ties, so where do they go? Good question.
I, that's a good question.
It's regards to Georgia.
Georgia?
Georgia.
Good to know. But they can be recycled safely, so anybody that's saying that we don't care, we do. Last question I have is, the time period, once we acquire, if we acquired the road, how long does it take to construct a rail to trail? Not, not the rail, not the trail by rail, but the rail to trail, but just a ballpark?
I think this is still a five-year to 10-year project, and, you know, I think it could be--
After you acquire the railroad? No, that's what my question is--
I would say five years, after, you know, it could, it could be maybe, I'd still think it's four to five years, and here's why, I mean, the design process is gonna take two years, you may not be able to fully fund that project, you know, right away.
It may be a dissenting opinion in the--
And I, and I hope I'm wrong, and Mr.--
It's more positive.
I would say five years, but it could be faster, and there's probably ways to jump-start it, if, you know, if there's full agreement with Benita Springs, with Seminole Gulf Rail, the acquisition happens this year, we get state support, you know, maybe three, three or four years, but it's, and maybe there's a way that local government can maybe front the work and get reimbursed, you know, there's, there's different creative ways to do things, but it's, it's, to me, it's five years, but I hope I'm wrong, I hope it's faster.
Next, Fred.
Yeah, I've got two or three questions.
I wanna give you a community hope, and not, not a dream, a real example, and that's the seven to eight mile segment that we just opened in Sarasota County. So the referendum came before us in 2016, I told you it passed by 73%. We borrowed the money in 2017, it was designed, and we started construction, I believe, in 2019, at some, Ned kinda sounds like our county staff, and we said, no, we own the land, it's an elevated railroad, hard-packed, now you gotta do the environmental issues, and you gotta do those types of things, you know, clean it up, make sure it's good, remove some of the encroachments that are on there, people's sheds, or, you know, some fences that are in there. But ours opened in 2022. So we did it, the construction part of it, and there were some bridges to be built, and you would have those issues too, that, you know, may take a little longer. But the city doesn't build it, a private contractor builds it, your city manages the contract. So you negotiate that in there, and say, we might put some incentives, or we want this built in two to three years. And that's what we did. And then DOT came along, and we did it purposefully to kind of, probably shouldn't say this publicly, but guilt them to move quicker, to build two overpasses over Clark Road and Bee Ridge Road, which are two, you know, state road interstate connectors, and those will start next month. And so it's kind of like, you, you need that first step of faith and commitment to your community, and they will back you, because you asked about money. You're gonna go everywhere for money, and TPL can help you, but that also means the private sector, foundations, private, you know, philanthropy is involved in this. And so that's why it's important for your community to buy in. I'm not excited about a 10-year project, I'm maybe a little older than I look, but I, I, I get excited about these because I wanna use them. I would be tired of my constituents driving to Sarasota County or Pinellas County to ride on a trail that they could ride in their backyard, and, you know, from today's point, maybe five years. But once we get the land under control, we know the price, then we can raise the money, the money's raised, the land's purchased, then it's just construction. So, and, and that's how we did it.
Are you still paying for--
Excuse me?
Did you sunset that tax increase?
No, it's, I think it was, what was the average home value? You know, if ours was 350, 350,000, you know, value average in Sarasota County, it's like another 12, it's like 12 bucks a year, for like 20 years.
But you borrowed the money.
Correct.
You didn't have the money.
No, so a referendum was passed that, we're a charter county, so we can only borrow up to a certain limit, and this was above that limit. So not all counties have that, you know, limitation.
So you're gonna be paying for this trail for 30 years?
Correct, but then that's where you look at the environmental, I mean, the environmental, the economic studies, it actually--
I'm not good on borrowing money.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Borrowed it at 2%. Borrowed it.
I've actually got one too.
Yes, Fred, I think you're next.
Yeah, well, first of all, I wanna make it clear, I am in favor of the bike trail. My wife and I rode a bike trail between the town we lived in and a town 14 miles away, round trip, minimum once a week to twice a week, whenever the weather permitted. We were, this was a northern state at that time. I agree with what Councilman Foleyka said, we should not make any decision until Astero makes their decision, because that would be us kind of pushing their button, let them make their decision, and you come back for that other thing you want. Then, what, what do you feel between Don, Scott, and you all is what we need to do today? That's what I'm looking for.
I'm not sure I--
Well, do we, should we, first of all, should we get into doing this thing about stopping the trail and the initial run at Astero Parkway, or should we wait until it hits MPO and you got both cities--
I look at it from, you know, the, the whole discussion's been, well, it's feasible if, right? So there's plenty of time to make decisions later on about where you want it to go, how far it's gonna be, if it's a smaller piece, and maybe it's just y'all to begin with. That's the first part, so I don't, I wouldn't make a decision till that point. And then the second part of this is, I don't think it helps the Trust for Public Land if you come out and say, yep, we want on the rail corridor, we want this, it doesn't seem like the best negotiation tactic to say that today either. And so that's essentially what we're going to the board to say too, is that there's two alternatives, it depends what happens moving forward, and those decisions can be made later on.
Would it, would it be reasonable, I would think the negotiator with railroad would, the less we tie their hands, the better deal we can get, hopefully, for--
That's, you know, we're, we're saying we have another alternative if, if it's way too high, right?
Good, thank you.
And we do.
Jesse.
Chris, no, go ahead, sir.
No, I, I am fully in support of the Rails to Trails, the Alternative 1, I think, as I understand what the MPO is looking for, is a resolution to be passed by the city of Benita Springs, which basically supports the ongoing efforts of the MPO, to sort of be able to drive this project forward, to be able to say to the railroad that, look, you know, the people of Benita Springs are behind this, this, this plan, but it, you know, we don't need to necessarily get down in all the planning details about where it goes, or how it goes, or how it's designed, or, or what it's gonna look like at this point. What I think's important is that this council expresses a, a unanimous, if possible, support for the concept of bringing outstanding amenity to our community, which is conversion of that rail line, which has been under, hasn't, has basically been abandoned for the last 15 years, into something that's very positive for our residents. So I, I don't think we're, I think that all the, and maybe if you could help me out a little bit, Don, I'm, I'm trying to just figure out what it is that you would like that resolution--
I don't act, I don't want a resolution at this point.
You don't want a resolution?
I think we have, we have tremendous support so far, and I know the numbers are a little bit different, I'm sitting there looking at them coming in, just got about another 20 this morning, we have a lot more support than I ever thought we would. And that's what we will convey to the board, the MPO board. You have two members that are on there as well, they can convey what they wanna do as, as part of this process too. But at this point, I'm not looking for any type of action.
Well, good, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, but I just want you to know that from my perspective, you know, the city of Benita Springs and its residents are looking to see this project accomplished as quickly as it can, because it would be an important amenity for the city.
And, and we wouldn't have started it if we weren't looking at that whole process as well, but, you know, we're at, we're at some decision points, so.
Jesse, please.
Yes, first of all, excellent presentation, thank you. This is something we've wanted for a while. This is a project that I've been supportive of since I got on council, and it's one of the things that Amy and I really bonded about, I think when she was up here too, was this project. I've always wanted bike-able, walk-able, pedestrian-friendly downtown, I think this helps get us towards that goal. In my last life, before I came back to the government side, I worked for a startup that does micro-mobility, and seeing and understanding how that's happening, I was just, I saw one that they did down in the Keys, not too long ago, there's, so they have a lot of, it wasn't to the size that we're doing here, but this is, this isn't a trend, this isn't going away, it's a healthy, it's a healthy alternative to having people all over the streets with, with a lot of the situations we've had. It utilizes a straight linear Parkway for a very long time, you can enjoy nature, and at the same time, you're connecting towns and communities. My issues have always been the funding mechanism, figuring that out, you know, I liked the idea that, you know, I'm with you, I'm not gonna raise somebody's taxes for it, now if the people wanna raise their own taxes via initiative, that's fine, I'm not gonna do it for this. I love this project, but I'm not gonna do it. If they say they wanna do it, okay, maybe I vote for it, but I'm not gonna be the one who says that's how we do it. As far as MPO goes, I would say that, you know, I, I think we're a little, I, I'm excited because I think we're kind of at a point where now, we really are, golf, the railway's gonna talk. I was out there not long ago, I took a ride on what they had left of it, and they're in the process of trying to find money to keep things going. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but as far as this side of life goes, you know, that could be an advantageous situation for getting this done, because at some point, if they don't get the support that they need or want, it may be better for them to sell. So, you know, understanding-- So, you know, understanding, if we zoom out, there's multiple communities who are going to be involved, it's a long process, we're not asking for anything other than essentially, we are in theory supportive of this, and then as we get closer into the granular, what is it going to cost geographically, are we, which, which model are we going to take? Then we can kind of really get some traction. But I think this city's been supportive and I'm very happy to, you know, in my opinion, I think it seems like everybody seems relatively supportive today, but as far as next steps, I'd love to see what the county has to say next, and then from there, really, the Gulf, really what intrigues me is the Gulf Railway discussions, because that's going to be very telling, and that will probably, I would say, materialize, that's going to have to materialize in the short term here. So figuring out how that goes, I think, is really the linchpin to seeing how close we actually are to this happening. So, thank you.
Jamie?
Um, no, I think it was a great presentation. I support it too. I, I think it'd be great for our community, and I agree, we have to see funding and finding, go into the railroad, find out, you know, what the cost is, if they're willing to sell, I think that's important next step.
I forgot one thing I would like to say. At MPO, can you express that I think LCSO at some level needs to be involved in the process? Because specifically, I mean, until we get to a model, it doesn't matter, but it still matters holistically. LCSO needs to be involved at the table in how the security of the situation would work, because there's a lot of ramifications from a security standpoint when you're connecting that long and you have in and out accessibility to places, whether, and I'm not even talking the one that, that is here today, I'm just saying in general, holistically, how does it look? What does that look like from a support level from LCSO to ensure that we can do this and have it as safe as it possibly can be? And then, once we know that, then we know what the funding looks like for that, because when we're going to be talking to the county, who's going to pay for that split is also going to have to be part of that conversation.
A lot of those questions.
Jesse?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
You're on your second time already.
This was important, I appreciate it.
I know it's important, but you're out of order.
I appreciate it.
You're out of order.
I appreciate you. Next.
You're out of order.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
We'll move on.
Thank you very much.
Hang on, hang on.
But Mr. Scott was going to say something.
No, no, go ahead.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm, I'm supposed to be running this place.
Think you are, right?
Okay, you jumped in after, you took, you won by a jab.
That was important.
I understand.
Okay, let's, let's-
Okay. If it's all right with the city attorney, if we could brought, could we do 10A while all these people are here?
It's not what we're doing.
Council's choice, so there's no, there's no reason why you couldn't, if you want to move that item forward ahead of your-
Can we vote to move item 10 up to reaffirm that the city's supporting the bikes, the rail, rails trail? That's 10A.
So-
We have a vote on-
There's no-
Just for additional clarification, so the, the, the presentation today was on the study, which is a question of, can it be done? The question of whether it should be done, what parts are done, how that's done, will all come to the city council later date. I believe Councilman Corey, whose item that was, may want to, may want to have additional input based on his questions during the presentation, but it's up to the council if you wish to move other items forward while the public is here.
Second item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Don Scott indicated that he's not looking for a resolution today. And so I would withdraw this green sheet at this time, pending further information from the MPO as to what, what they would like to, for us to do in the future, but I just wanted to reiterate that we support their efforts to, on this project. So I would withdraw the green sheet at this point.
Is that possible to?
Yes.
Very good. All right, anybody, any other questions here? Jesse, you, I'll give you a second bite at the apple.
No, I'm full, I'm full, first one, first one was perfect.
Thank you, gentlemen. Well, I, I don't want, I'm afraid of $100 million scares the heck out of me, when we get, I had to lower him taxes, what, $10 million, so we're talking 10 years worth of, you know, and I'm not going to borrow any money, sorry. We borrowed $36 million 25 years ago, or 20 years ago, and we paid back 60 million. That's not good for the taxpayer, I don't care what you, what you're doing, you're not going to pay twice as much for something by borrowing the money. So we'll work on this, I'm in favor of this, God, I wish it was, was built and running right, right, right today. So, thank you so much, we'll, we'll be back again, and we'll keep working on this. And thank you, folks.
Thank you.
You're going to get your trail eventually.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Good, that takes it. All right, well, let's take a break, let me take a-
10 minutes?
We're done, aren't we, pretty much? What do we got? We only have one item.
Have we done the consent?
While they're cleaning out, let's, let's take a 10-minute break.
I think we get to consider in the ratio.
Hey, we only have one item left.
No.
Don't we? There's going to be some discussion on that.
She's got some.
Unfortunately.
Thank you.
Absolutely, okay.
It's Friday, Dan.
Hey, so all the things that he wants, I was like, in any of the obstacles, we'll put them all on the table and then we'll work through all of them and we'll know what's going on.
We call this meeting a order again. Uh, we're on the consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second. Any discussions? Full call, please.
Councilwoman Bogus?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Here, I, I.
Aye.
Yeah, I.
I thought he said hold on, I was married.
Keep going, just keep going.
Councilwoman Carr? Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fullet?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, let's take care of that. Now, 11A, we have, it's a vacate, Jay Sweet, please, give us an introduction and what this is all about and where it's at. I couldn't find a name on the, on the map.
I promised you that. Good morning, counsel, Jay Sweet, Community Development. What we have today is an application to vacate a portion of a public utility easement. The reason this has come before us is there is an existing drainage structure in this. The property owner would like- The property owner would like to build a building a little bit different than the original design was in, on the plat. It is a platted easement, therefore we have to handle the vacation. Conditions of any approval are that they relocate all the drainage prior to the vacation, and I'll just go through this real quick. So it is, oh, down at the bottom left-hand corner, that's the old Albertson's Building, it's where Goodwill is now. Uh, they are the property with the star there. And of course, this is the vacant, uh, property. There is utilities through there that they will be modifying and relocating some of those. They don't need our permission, like Benice Springs Utilities, uh, but for this one, they do. And to make it really simple, what I did here is, what you see in the red or, uh, pink is the easement that's being vacated. They have already recorded a new easement, uh, where you have that yellow highlight. And so we're going to be exchanging easements, and as part of that, they will relocate all the utilities that are in those easements. Uh, there are letters of no objection, uh, and I'm, answer any questions you have.
Uh, I'm glad you distinguished, uh, the new and the old. Couldn't figure that out. Uh, I make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Is there anyone in the public who has any comment on this item?
Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fulick.
No.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bogus.
Aye.
Okay, very good.
Ms. Mary, may I ask one question? Derek, you were about to say something?
Uh, no, I believe I was just noticing that, uh, Councilman Fulick had a question.
Maybe I just need to speak louder. I did have a question, but we've already voted on it, right?
Yeah, you got, Mayor, my name is Mayor. Mayor.
I did say Mayor.
Louder. I'm hard of hearing, sir.
Yes.
Sorry, I missed your, do you have a question? Do you have a comment?
Well, we voted on it, have we not?
Well, we can re-vote if you want.
They can reconsider.
My question was to, to, Derek, do we have any sort of liabilities here? Is there anything long-term that can affect the city by?
No, in this, in this, in this instance, what, what's being, uh, I think Mr. Sweet addressed it, but the, the issue is that when the property was originally platted, all the dedicate, as a, as a function of Florida law with respect to items dedicated to the public, this is essentially an easement. In this easement are existing utilities and drainage. In order for that to be changed, even between property owners who are all in agreement, if it's on the plat, it must come to the council. Now, because this is also part of a, a development, and we don't control the utilities that are in the easement, but we are the trustee of the public with respect to that easement, what is being asked for is a new easement, non-platted, to replace it, but only, the development approvals and everything to occur only upon the relocation of those utilities, so that nothing happens as a result of your vacation today that, that can't be undone.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I don't thank you, I'm sorry I missed you. Okay, we got city attorneys?
I only have a, a brief, just a brief heads up, um, for the council and the public. Um, you know, uh, we were previously directed, Arlene and myself and, and Matt Feeney have been working, uh, steadily with Baron Collier on the Benice Springs Golf Course to see as their project proceeds, how or if we can find some way to use their mobilization to acquire the, the interests that the city would require for a dr- for its drainage project and to coordinate on construction. This is my understanding, and I know that they will be making a presentation probably next month, that Baron Collier is ready to move forward with construction, and so we will probably be fi- finding some way to fo- formalize that agreement to be able to take advantage of those, those mobilizations. I don't have the numbers, but what I, as I understand, has been, has been raised, is, you know, by having them on the ground, working on their development and doing the work that the city would otherwise do, we will save significant money than if we were to come in after the fact and do it separately mobilized. So, that will be formalized in some manner, and an agreement or understanding will be brought to the City Council for consideration in next month or so. I don't have that agreement yet, and can't tell you the terms of it, but I just want to let you know, so that the public is aware when it does come before you.
Okay, now I have a meeting with Baron Collier on Thursday.
And that, and that's probably what they'll be wanting to discuss.
Friday, I'm sorry, Friday. And that's probably in, in connection with?
Yeah, just what their proposal is.
Okay, very good. Anything else, or?
Nothing.
City manager, you're on deck.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, as, as we each meeting provide an update regarding Hurricane Ian, um, I would like to ask Matt Feeney to give you an update on debris removal and announce some important dates.
I was gonna say good evening, but good morning, Council.
Yeah, we might be here.
So, our, our debris removal has gone really quite well, uh, for this storm, based on, on what we experienced, and, uh, we've hauled off most of our, uh, of our debris off of the site at Coconut Point, um, so that operation is, is winding down. And we're, we're at a position, like, we surveyed the city with, with the contractor yesterday, we're really in a position to, to shut down our debris operations, so we, we want to give folks, you know, a last, a last ditch, uh, attempt of time-wise, but really what we would like to say is, uh, Monday, January 23rd would be the last day to put stuff out to the curb, and we would follow up with collection efforts, uh, but through Friday of the 27th. So, you know, unless there's some objection.
Uh, can we broadcast that to the people?
I'll, I'll be sending it to our communications folks right after this meeting, and they'll get a public service announcement out, as well as put it up on our website.
I see the county wants to go to the end of January.
Uh, well, as I mentioned, I've surveyed the city, and, and really where we are is, we're not even running trucks every day, it's, it's, it's very hit and miss, um, and it's, it's wound down, so it's, it's time to close it down.
And the, uh, north end of Hickory Boulevard?
Is clean.
Taken care of?
Yes, sir.
I have no objection to this.
Okay.
Is that, what, you have any idea what the fresh tag's gonna be on this?
It's gonna be north, I, I don't have an exact number, but it'll be north of about $6 million, somewhere between, probably closer to seven, but, uh, please don't hold me to that just yet, but it's gonna be in that order of magnitude.
It's still an estimate.
That's a lot better than 12. Didn't we go 12 last time?
That was floodwater, too.
I would not feel comfortable providing an estimate, also considering the fact that we have an upcoming meeting with FEMA regarding our public assistance grant back, so, um, at this moment, I'd, I'd rather have some of that more detailed out before we make a public commitment to any estimate.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to also bring up, um, during, um, the storm, uh, in the, in the beginning stages, we, uh, as your, as your incident command officer, myself, I executed Executive Order 2203 declaring a curfew, um, on, on our beaches. At this time, we've been made aware that the city of Sanibel has changed their curfew from, from previous 7 to 7, or 6 to 6, to, um, they are now 12 a.m. to 6 a.m. I understand the northern, I mean, the southern boundary of Fort Myers Beach is similar. Um, there's some, I'm not quite sure as to residents or non-residents, I wanted to make it clear that our residents are permitted to their facilities 24/7. There's no denying of access during the curfew times. This would be someone who is not a resident of the island having access. Um, and then our sheriff's office has been working cordially with folks who are utilizing or are staying at homes there, that they have a process, they've worked out for that. So, um, I would like to get your direction to execute an executive order, uh, amending the curfew at this time, if that so pleases the council.
Motion to change.
Sir.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fulick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogus.
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon.
Aye.
I also wanted to make sure that all of council received an email on Friday, um, from Matt. Um, we were asked by our lobbyists to provide a factual letter, it's, 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 it's meant to be just the facts, not a policy call, uh, to the Senate Select Committee on Resiliency and the House Select Committee on Hurricane Resilience and Recovery. Um, we just wanted to confirm that when an opportunity happens, we understand this could happen quickly, it may be in between meetings, just to reaffirm that council's, uh, comfortable with staff providing these factual type. Anything that's a support request or a policy call, um, we would want to hold that to defer to, to council to make that decision. So if you're comfortable, because we understand this could be fast-moving, uh, we'd like to have the opportunity to keep providing those facts, pictures, documentation of, of, of our recovery process.
And you'll bring that back to council at the next meeting?
Yes, so each time we would bring it back, so you're aware, and, and make sure you've each get, receive a copy.
Okay.
Uh, I did want to, um, let you know that, um, we will be asking for the finalization of our legislative acts, asks at our next meeting, so if you would like to talk with myself and Matt or a lobbyist in between now and our next council meeting, we need to narrow down those decisions so that, um, our staff, Ellie, can help in assisting, filling out the appropriate, appropriate forms to both the House and Senate, um, for those appropriations requests. Um, also wanted to advise that we will be participating, um, by the end of the month in the Lee County Local Mitigation Strategy, uh, process, that is where all the projects are ranked. Um, as you remember, we, we're, we got direction from council to keep all of the same projects that we previously had, but add on to geographically, uh, the continuation of the home buyout slash home elevation program, especially to those harder-hit communities. Um, I received feedback from some of you, um, in your districts of those areas, we want to make sure we're concentrating on those vulnerable locations. Um, and also that we added a drainage project, uh, for Morton Grove Drive as well. So that's the ones we'll be advocating for at the meeting, understanding where the rank will be on that voting process as well.
And the home rule is in there?
Oh, so that is legislative priorities. What I'm discussing right now is the local mitigation strategy, which is a plan that all of the municipalities in Lee County and Lee County participate in. It's, it's a process for disaster recovery, and that o- unlocks eventually the funding through FEMA for the HMGP program. And then, last but not least, um, our very fair clerk, who has been with us since she was 12 as well, has, has shared with Matt and I that she would like to start making plans, uh, for her retirement. I know many of you know this individually, she has graciously agreed to work with us as we start our recruiting process, so I did not want to be any surprise as we'll start working on a, um, job, updating the job description, and we have outreach to the Florida Association of Clerks, and there's also another, um, recruiting group that works for local governments as well, but, uh, we will also, in the future, have our, our proper planned, um, recognition of Debbie in the future, but, uh, I just wanted to put you all on notice that we're gonna begin that process. As a reminder, um, I would select the, 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 the candidate, and then you would confirm in a vote of a resolution, that is the same as you do with the finance director, so.
And Debbie is, is gonna break her in for a while? You're gonna work together for a while?
We're, we're gonna see as, what we can do, when we can come, yes, we were able to do that with the finance director position, but, um, we'll, we'll see what we can, what we can do, so, but, um, she's agreed to work with us until we get a little bit further, uh, down the road, so we appreciate and her, uh, and we'll have the proper send-off at the right time.
Okay, okay, Deb, you earned it. Okay, anything else, that city manager?
No, thank you.
Okay, uh, I'd like to report that, uh, the governor has put $3.5 billion into Everglades, the ever-flowing river of grass, to get the water into the Florida Bay. Uh, that project has sort of been slowed down, and, uh, so the governor's working on that, and, uh, that should help, um, take some of the pressure off the Lake Okeechobee and, and the Loosatchie River. Okay, uh, Fred, you have anything to report today?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to add on, piggyback on what you said, he also committed something like $5 billion over the next four years to be given towards the environment, water projects, resiliency, you know, changing septic tanks to sewer and all that. So I think, I think everybody owes him a round of applause, 'cause I know the, the press conference, the, uh, South Florida Water Management Chair said that we've done more in the last four years for water than they had done for the last two decades, so that's pretty, pretty strong statement. Now, the only other thing I have here is something I want to make you aware of. Pass these around. All, all this is, is, I like to see if I can problem solve, so I wrote something up, very short, to the point, and sent it to the delegation under my name, and I said, "Does not mean that anybody on this council agrees with it, is, supports it or anything, but it's a way to reduce property insurance premiums, which we're all interested in." Big thing is, make it real simple. Certain parts of your homes down in Florida especially, don't have the same life expectancy as a whole house. Roofs are one of the ones that jump out, and the roof, roofing has jumped in price by about three in the last two years, factor of three. So what they would do is take certain systems out of the normal coverage of full replacement cost and put it on a prorated value schedule, which the insurance companies and the state legislative body will have to do to. That would mean that no longer, if a guy got his hurricane, a hurricane destroyed a roof, and it was 30 years old, they'd get the cost of a whole new roof. And that, and where, there's been a lot of lawsuits, so, so that's, it's real simple, short, sweet, uh, they're good, they're, they have it, they'll, if they like it at all, they'll probably go to the insurance industry and see what they think, but, just wanted to make sure you knew about it, that's all.
Okay, uh, Jamie, you got any comments tonight?
I do not.
Okay. Jesse, you wanna?
No, I'm good. I would just say, real quick, maybe when we talk to, start to think about legislative priorities, that we kind of have an outline, one thing to be cognizant of is that the initial timetable from the state on Lover's Key is like a year and a half to two years, and for those of you who don't know, Lover's Key is the second most visited state park in the entire state of Florida, and it's actually here. So like, for us, that's kind of a big deal, so I'm not saying we get rid of anything, maybe we potentially consider adding on, you know, prioritization of getting Lover's Key reopened, um, because it's just, uh, it's such a jewel, uh, of the entire state, and honestly, it's the best park we have in the city, so, I appreciate that thought. Thanks.
Nigel, please.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mayor. Fred, I appreciate what he just brought here, but the actuality is, um, that they're already working on this now, and roofs are a priority, but even better news is, and I, I have to say, I didn't vote for them, but I really like our new lobbyists, they provide a lot of information very quickly, and one of the things is that there are already companies lined up, at least five, to come back to Florida. Don't have the names yet, but the simple fact that the state legislature has already passed legislation removing the assignment of benefits, that was the one single biggest obstacle we have, so, insurance isn't gonna get cheaper overnight, but insurance prices are going to stabilize, and eventually probably go down, it's the rule of economics, the more people want to do business here, the cheaper it's gonna get, so, this alarmist, uh, that our insurance is gonna go up and double again in another year, just not factual.
Uh, Ja- Amy? Amy.
Yeah.
Laura, please, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Amy was here, and we all miss her, but we love Jamie being here as well. Um, well, this weekend, um, I went to a fabulous event thrown by the sheriff at his new outreach center, I saw Jamie and Nigel were there, and petting zoo, and people on still, it was a real family event, it was beautiful, wonderful. And then the Benita Springs National Art Festival was this weekend, thousands of people, and thank goodness it didn't rain, but it was cold. Um, and people seemed to have a really good time, they'll have another one in February. And, uh, yesterday I went to a Southwest Florida climate and community summit, um, down at Arthur X, very, very interesting, yeah, met up with some folks from Estero and Marco Island, and, um, made some interesting connections and knowledge, so it was, it was really enlightening. And then, in Fa- February, I will be going up to DC for FAST, which is the Federal Advocacy, um, uh, with the League of Cities, and, and that's on my dime, not on the city's dime, but I think that we need to be represented, because yesterday they did a little film, and Benita wasn't even in the film of how devastated, and clearly, Fort Myers Beach was hit far worse, I mean, boom. But Benita's always sort of left out of the dialogue. But, Benita's always sort of left out of the dialogue of the cities that were hit, and we were hit, and so, I just want to, you know, go up there, and Matt's gonna help me with pictures, and, so, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Chris? Yeah, I mentioned this to Arlene the other day, that there was an article in the paper about the beaches in Marco Island, and, as many of you know, Benita Beach has never received a Critical Erosion designation by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, even though?
Yes, it did.
No, it hasn't. The north end, the very north end of it, yes, but not where most people think of when they want to walk Benita Beach. One of the things Marco Island did was that they entered into an agreement with the Tourism Development Council wherein, the homeowners along the beach agreed to participate in the funding of restoration of the beach, and that ended up being matched by Tourism Development Council dollars. So, I think there's probably a lot more detail to it, but I would like to see that, make some inquiries of Marco Island to see how that program worked, and see if there's a way in which we can get Tourism Development Dollars down to take care of what's some pretty obviously erosion that's on our beach. I don't think Florida DEP will make it critically eroded, because they'll just say that Ian's a one-time event, our sands, I used to think our sand was back out in the Gulf, they probably will say now, the sand ended up on Hickory Boulevard and got hauled off by the county, but, the critical erosion is an elusive kind of thing, if you can believe that Vanderbilt Beach is critically eroded. It's been critically eroded since 1992, once it received that designation, it always has that designation, therefore, they get a lot of money to keep their beaches pristine. We don't. So, anyway, I'd just like to see how Marco sort of handled that situation, maybe it's something we can think about here, so, I wanted to report that.
I think, Councilman, what you're asking is, you like to direct staff to give you some more information as well?
Right, see how they did it. Okay, you got everybody? My turn. Yeah, I asked the Governor about the homeowner's policy, and he's thinking about, if you buy a home, usually, if you borrow money, you have to have insurance, and that really put a crimp on a lot of people. Not everybody buys for cash, a big portion of people living in Benita are able to pay cash for their property, but it would really put a binder on a lot of banks not having this property insurance. Part of the reason, I think, that, a friend of mine, her insurance company made her replace her hot water heater, "Oh, it's so old, oh, we're not gonna cover your apartment, or cover your house, because your hot water heater's old." I didn't know they got inside of your house. But, part of it, I think the insurance industry in itself, with the, year or so ago, interest rates were so low, they take your premiums and they invest it in CDs and treasuries, and they get extra income, which helps to cover the costs, but they haven't had that extra income with the interest rates being so low for the last two or three years, or whatever. Interest rates have gone up considerably, so that maybe it'll help them give them some more breathing room in the future. But, it's important, and that's why I brought it up to the Governor, it was kind of a sour grape-type thing, when he was saying how much money we're gonna put into Everglades and septic tanks and stuff, but here, the reality is, it's just as important to our I don't, I've lived on Benita Beach for 48 years, and there's no need to put more sand on the beach, the sand will come back in time. The north end, that gets re-nursed, the county allowed the buildings to build too close to the water in the first place, so the answer there is to tear the buildings down, which isn't gonna happen, so, I don't think we need to put more sand on Benita Beach, it'll be there. So, anyways, that's my opinion. You don't live on the beach, do you? You look at?
I go out to the beach almost every day.
Oh, good for you, good for you.
So, I know the condition of the beach probably better than you do.
Okay.
I concur with Chris.
Public comment? Yes, sir, yes, yes, Benita Springs, Mr. Yes.
Thank you, okay. The old library was identified by Dr. Felke, FGCU, as being the area of greatest need in the study of Benita Springs seniors. Unfortunately, he was here earlier, but he couldn't stay, okay? It's presently zoned for a senior center type of use, it is next to the city pool and close to the city recreation center, is in close proximity to Benita Springs Middle School. The senior center at this location would have mutual benefits with its neighbors. While the current senior population is large, the future rejection is so even larger increases. When the county identified many potential issues with the building, such as the possible cost of about $105 million for hurricane flood protection, our organization balked at the cost. Hurricane Ian and conversations with longtime volunteers put that report in greater perspective. We realize that there are a number of steps in the process, and that there are competing interests. We hope that the belief that it should be the home of the neighborhood services, aka code enforcement and sheriff's substation, is not taken as the best use of the building. The services that they provide are mobile and do not require prime community meeting space, but as expedient, it's often not the best course of action. I just wanted to have one other thing that's not related to the senior center, but, so, relating to affordable housing. Affordable housing has been locally addressed through homeownership programs like Habitat for Humanity. For homes built and being built in Rosemary Park, impact fees the city collects, over $17,000 each, will not be due until the owner sells. Iona House is a nonprofit which provides low-income rental housing and is looking to build for the first time. Two developers told us that selling houses like Habitat model was feasible, but rentals could only be built, low-income rentals could only be built through large subsidies. The $17,000 impact fee payment is required for the permit to build one rental house. This was just paid by Iona for a test case for a house that will be used pre-engineer construction. Iona seeks to move people from subsidized housing to that of the market, and have them move on to provide opportunities for others. Renting increases go to a savings program the tenants receive when they leave. They may use it to acquire other housing. Programs that provide assistance to build rental housing, such as Florida's SHIP program, which you can get possibly up to $40,000 per unit, would just characterize the savings as regular rent, and thereby keep it below the subsidy threshold. Most low-income rentals are built using tax credits and require at least 65 units. Iona's 2.5 acres next to a similar-sized Habitat lot of 14 homes will not support that number. The state has allowed localities to approve affordable housing that does not comply with current zoning or development plans. Will Benita Springs take advantage of the opportunity or wait till it becomes a mandate? Lastly, Benita promotes government light. Benita allows developers to pay fees to achieve bonus density. The current ordinance should be changed to allow the bulk of the funds to provide rental housing instead of the current homeownership. While there have been no collections in the last three years, things may change. I guess right now, you have about $14 in the account to provide those subsidies. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 40 seconds left.
Any other public comment? Yeah, here we go. You're helping people, I know you are.
Oh, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, good morning, city staff, city council members, and congratulations, Debbie, you've done a great job. My name is Teri Lemain, I'm the President of the Benita Springs Assistance Office and the President of the United Way House here in Benita Springs. I am very happy to announce this morning, we just finalized our Ian Recovery Distribution Program. It will be televised tonight on Wink and Waterman Broadcasting, and you can get more details, we just finalized it an hour ago. What this program is, is our agency has been selected to be a POD distribution unit. As of this afternoon, we will have brand-new donated furniture. I'm going to start with bedding and mattresses, and these will be available to people in our city for recovery post-Ian. There is no charge to this program, this is something we've been working on with national manufacturers and national furniture companies. We will be the only point of contact in the city of Benita Springs. I highly encourage anybody, anybody, we do not discriminate, and yes, Mayor, we are continually to help people seven days a week, and we're very proud of what we do. I just thought it would be remiss of me not to bring this to your attention, since this is a good venue, and as I said earlier, Wink News, Fox 4, Waterman Broadcasting, they'll be doing lots of stories in the next upcoming days. So, I really highly encourage anyone, even today, I'm saying, staff members, my board of directors, anybody that has been impacted, we do have this opportunity here in the city of Benita Springs to give our residents in need, brand-new furniture.
Exactly, where are you located?
And what's the phone number?
Okay, the phone number is area code 239-992-3034. We are conveniently located at the north end of our beautiful city, we are in the Realtor Center, which is 25300 Burnwood Drive. There's many Burnwoods in our city, we are on Burnwood Drive, Suite 6. Our normal operating hours are Monday through Friday, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. We have a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week answering service. I really do anticipate a lot of activity with this. I must say, we are a agency where 92 cents of every single dollar goes back into our community, so we do not own trucks, or vehicles, or vans, such as national organizations like Salvation Army. So, the only negative thing to this Ian Recovery Program I see is that people will need to bring their own transportation. But, everybody in Benita knows some guy or gal with a truck, right?
Can you give me a phone number and address again, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The address for the Benita Springs Assistance Office is 25300 Burnwood Drive, Suite Number 6. We're located just about a quarter of a mile north of the Benita Springs Charter School on the auxiliary road that the Charter School is located on. We're in a baby-blue, single-story building, and we're very proud to have the United States American flag flying in front of it, that's how you can find us.
And the phone number again?
Our phone number is area code 239-992-3034, and as I said, this is a brand-new program. As many of you know in the room, and in the audience, and in the city, post-recovery, we all heard this, it's a marathon, not a sprint. Oh, amount of time.
Thank you, Teri.
Okay, thank you. Can I say something else? Please, Mr. Mayor? I just want to thank city staff again, our Fresh Benita Program, that we got the $70,000 grant from the city, is working out very well. I don't know what news station you listen to, but eggs have gone up 9%, and we are very, very proud. Every resident in need that comes to our agency is getting 18 eggs when they come to our agency, so, thank you for letting me go over the buzzer, I feel like I'm on a game show. All right, take care, everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, please? Anything else? Do we adjourn?
We adjourn.
All right.